Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Motion to, um, the, uh, start at six oh one on February, uh, January, I'm sorry, uh, nineteenth at six oh one, um, can we have a, um, motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I won't. Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. We have two minutes, uh, to approve today. You want to start with January fourth? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented by Bill?
Uh, which, which one are you doing, Joe?
January fourth. That's the first one.
Um, I just had one question. I just never heard of John Schaefer, but I guess he's new in town, so I correct that.
John Schaefer lives, um, on, uh, Cabell Road and he bought the old, uh, well, you would, you would know John's house, I forget, um.
He bought the whole Steven place, it's across from Jamie's old shop.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and apparently they're, they're full time because of the virus now, where they're, they're spending much time up here, I guess. That's the history of John.
So on those minutes, uh, you go down first page under number five, which is highway, uh, you go down to the fourth bullet point under five, it says no data on new truck being done, body form, um, should be.
From, I guess, right?
Yeah. And then the only other thing that I have is on the second page, third bullet point down, working on the conduct, there's no nine in conduct of the election.
Okay.
Got that. That's all I got.
Um, I have one.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Um, on the first page, we see number four warrants. You follow that last sentence above it, says sheriff or, yeah, but it should be his presentation. They have H I S S.
Yeah, yes.
Yep. Are there any others? If not, uh, somebody make a motion to accept the amended minutes of January fourth.
I have, women, I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. On, on number eight, other business, it should be complaint, you left off the T.
You're right.
That's all I have.
All right, so somebody make a motion to accept the amended minute of January fourth, please.
I won't.
Come on.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes of January fourth as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next set of minutes is the fourteenth, which is the special meeting, uh, we had. So are there any additions or corrections to those?
If I could speak for a second, I noted a duplicate present and I fixed that on my copy.
Oh, the double present?
Yeah. Yeah, I had Charlie Bonin twice.
Your audio is terrible, Bill.
Yeah, it's awful.
Somebody play it.
Hey, hey, Bill, your, your audio is terrible tonight.
I understand.
Okay. All right, so we got.
Are there any other additions or corrections of the minutes of the fourteenth?
Yeah, under number two, about one, two, three, four, five, six, six lines down, uh, to be voted is in there twice, that's, that's item number two, six lines down, to be voted is in there twice.
Okay.
All right.
You got that, Bill?
And then the next.
Hang on, let me see the, on the, Bill, you're frozen up, but.
I got it.
Okay, good. That's all I want to know. Go ahead, Stan.
Okay. Um, let me see, where were we? You just got, uh, to be voted, right? That's the only one.
Yes.
And then one down, sentence says, Bill Kearns will check the language and A N D, uh, bring it all.
Where is that?
On the. It's on the, uh, what, I'm going to just kind of, from the, from clerk treasurer line number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight lines down under clerk treasurer, to be voted is in there twice.
Are there any others?
Yeah, one, uh, two more.
Right.
And on the next sentence down, it said, Bill Kearns will check the language and A N D.
Yeah. Got that.
Okay. And then under public comment, uh, I think it's supposed to be none, it kind of says knowing.
Okay.
Does anybody have, have any other additions or corrections to the, to the minutes of, um, the fourteenth? If not, a motion to accept?
I won't.
Second for them, someone?
Second.
John, second it. Um, if there's no further discussion, um, all in favor of accepting the amended minute of fourteenth, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, minutes accepted. Okay, Fred, I guess you're on now with the audit report, so we'll leave it in your hands.
Okay, um, so what I can do is I can do a brief overview, um.
Good.
And then, uh, see if there's any questions.
Okay.
So, um, this is an audit that's done in accordance with, uh, generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards, that's required by statute. Um, what our role is to provide opinions on those statements and a report on compliance with laws and regulations and internal control, uh, which we include in the back of the report. So, uh, the, the general fund and the capital projects fund, we're issuing a clean unmodified opinion, which means that, uh, you're following the rules related to modified cash basis accounting. Uh, for the library and the trust, uh, trustee of public funds fund, um, the only issue there is that the investments are being carried at market value rather than at cost, but, so we have to tell you about it, but frankly, probably market value makes more sense because there's been significant changes in that and you get to see what the, what the market value is. What the theory is though, is that until you sell it, it's volatile and so you really haven't locked it in until you sell it, but, so we, we do need to tell you that, but that's the only issue related to those two funds. Um, jumping over to the general fund on page six, you can see that you ended the year with a total fund balance of six hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred, I'm at the bottom of the first column. That's up almost a hundred fifty thousand over last year. Um, some of that money's restricted, some of it's committed by the voters, um, some of it's been assigned by the board for various purposes and all of those are explained, uh, back in the footnotes, um, starting on page twenty-five. The unassigned fund balance is that money that is there to, uh, for cash flow, for emergencies, just to really keep you going. Um, that was about a hundred and sixty-three thousand last year, it's about a hundred eighty-nine eight this year. I always like to think of it in terms of when do your taxes come in, so, you know, your first taxes are due around August fifteenth, that's about forty-six days, kind of running, you know, with minimum tax money. Um, with this level of unassigned fund balance, that's about sixty days, so you're in good shape. That, that, that means you should be able to get through the year, you know, unless something unusual comes up, and we're certainly in that unusual category, but, uh, should, should be able to get through without having to borrow in anticipation of taxes and, um, I suspect that's the way you've been operating, uh, being able to live off your fund balance. So that's a good thing. Um, it also, you know, it's there for emergencies, if you need to match grants, if you, there's unanticipated expenditures, um, so it is important to maintain a pretty good fund balance. Um, how you got there, you can see on your budget actual report, which starts on page eight and runs for seven pages, about midway on page nine, you'll see that you actually took in about sixty-eight thousand five hundred more than you budgeted, uh, a lot of that were grants, um, and then there was, you know, there was things that went over, things that went under, but in, but in total, you did pretty well on revenues. And then if you jump to page fourteen on expenses, again, you, you had a balanced budget, you planned to spend exactly what you took in, but you spent about seventy-eight thousand less. Um, again, there were things that were over and under, uh, but a lot of it was, a lot of it was re-treatment, um, you know, just that couldn't happen during this, this time. So between the overage on the revenues of sixty-eight and the, the underspending of seventy-eight, instead of breaking even, you did about a hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred to the good. So you actually increased your fund balance, um, during this timeframe. Um, next couple of pages are private purpose trust funds and there's a lot of detail on those, uh, back in the back on page thirty-four and thirty-five. Uh, what those are, are funds that you control but are set aside for specific purposes that, that really aren't town functions per se. Um, that's followed by a lot of footnotes on page seventeen, um, that runs all the way, um, to page thirty-three, um, explains who you are, gives some more information on your assets and liabilities, it talks about what debt you have, um, explains a little bit about the fact that you're a participant in the state municipal employees retirement system. Then, as I said, there's two schedules in the back that break out all of your private purpose trust funds on page thirty-four and thirty-five. And then lastly is the report that we're required to submit that talks about your compliance with laws and regulations and internal control. And we had no findings related to laws and regulations, we had no material weaknesses in internal control and the only recommendation we had was just a more thorough review of general journal entries and we know that that's now happening, um, in addition to the auditors, um, I think one of the select board members goes, is going to be coming in and looking at those. And that, that doesn't need to happen on a real time basis, I mean, that's up to you, that's your own policy, but we just want it to be looked at either monthly, quarterly, um, it's just that second set of eyes, um, because you've got really good controls over everything else, this is kind of the last piece of the puzzle, um, and I think it's already been dealt with.
Well, has, John Gregory is going to do that and I think he's going to, he's going to go see Kim Monthly, I believe.
And that's perfect. Monthly's fine. Um, and really, you know, it's just a matter of looking him over, asking any questions if things look unusual, just, just following up on him, um, and, you know, John, if there's any questions, you can always call us or consult, you know, with, with whoever, but, um, it's, it's just that second set of eyes that becomes important. The, the only other recommendation we had in the separate management letter, um, was to simply at some point do a fraud risk assessment and I know that's being planned, so that's just a brainstorming session, sitting down and just trying to think, where are we susceptible? What are the things we have to deal with? Um, you know, is it technology? Is it access to our bank account? Do we, you know, are we, are we up to date in terms of having our system secure if we need to? Um, how do we deal with folding green cash? Um, you, you've got good controls, so, but it's always a good exercise to go through and document, um, just somebody understands where those risks are. So that's something I think you can do yourself, um, as I said, it's just a, just a session to get together and then just document what you've done. That's really it.
Fred, what is the timeframe on that, uh, for us to do that? Is it something right away or is that some?
No, it's anytime really, anytime you can get to it, um, you know, there's no rush in doing that, but it's nothing critical from our perspective, but we do think it's a good thing to do, so, you know, um, once you get through town meeting, um, you know, and there's some time, I know it's going to be busy until then at least and, um, but, you know, anytime after that's fine. I don't know if there's any other general or specific questions on any of the information I can answer. I got to say, the fact that we're sitting here at this time considering the pandemic, uh, that, that's really an indication of, you know, the, your staff did a great job, uh, Kim and, you know, and everybody there and, and Bill and able to get this done. It was a little unusual this year, we did have a person come down for a day, uh, but a lot of it was done remotely, but it seemed to work out fine. I know it's probably extra work on your staff to get that done that, that way and, uh, hopefully we won't have to do this again, but I guess we'll see.
Well, I, I can tell you, Fred, that, uh, we appreciate it, all the help you can give us and I really have to say, I think, um, not only Kim, um, but all the people who worked for Kim and, and the board, I think, um, we're all very dedicated to this town and it shows, uh, the way that, uh, that we have on the books. So I, I think that's, we, we need to continue to do that and I hope that, uh, we will be able to do that now that we're having elections again, so, but, uh, I, I feel very comfortable personally.
Yeah, I agree.
Me too.
I agree.
Kim, do you have any, anything of Fred or any questions that you have that you need to have answered?
No, um, we've been going back and forth throughout this whole process, so he pretty much answered everything, um, or Jenna did, so I think I've gone over everything I needed to.
Great. Does anybody else have any questions of, of Fred?
Good job.
Yeah, good job, Fred.
Well, it's not me, it's your staff.
Good job.
Did a great job, yeah.
Well, I, I think it helps, uh, you know, I, I'm not saying that you have the job permanently, but I think it does help with continuity that we keep the same auditors because it makes it a lot easier, rather than starting from scratch for somebody to come in and you know the, you know the drill now, you know the people, you know the issue and, uh, and you know, I guess we trust what you guys are doing.
Well, it certainly made it easier this year considering that we could do it remotely, so, um, that, that certainly did help.
Fred, I do have a question.
Yeah.
The interest, the interest that we moved in for the Walker Bridge account that we're saving for and I had the, um, repurchase agreement and it gained two thousand nine hundred in interest, so because that's back into the reserve, does that mean, um, again, it's to the voters to, or is it separate from the hundred thousand that the voters had voted on? Can we still put that towards the bridge or, I know we're assigning it on it and I'm assuming it's going to have to be a yearly basis in our minutes that the board assigns that interest to go into the Walker fund.
Yeah, and, and it's always, you know, it always depends on the original motion and the article, if the article had said, you know, a hundred thousand plus accumulated interest, we wouldn't even be talking about it and I don't think it did, so.
No, it didn't.
The fact that it was silent means it's up to the board, you could either correct it by an amended, you know, motion, but having the board assign it is fine too, um, you know, the ultimate, the taxpayers could disagree with that, but, but I can't imagine why they would, so it's fine to assign, so you'll simply have two components, you'll have the committed, then you have the assigned, um, and you're right, that, every year should be, assignment should be revoted on.
Okay.
Each board kind of stands on its own, even though it might be the same numbers, um, it's a new board each March.
Fred, is that, is that something that maybe next, not this town meeting obviously, but next town meeting that we should put some language in the warnings that, um, will, will allow us to do that or is, or just a simple assignment by the board, fine?
It's probably fine, but I, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to give the voters that last say, I mean, it, you know, um, you don't want to clutter up the articles, I suppose, but I mean, that, that, there's no harm in doing that certainly, um, and that's really your call.
Well, Kim, maybe we'll make a little mental note so that next year, when we sit down, we can decide whether we want to do it or not and let's see what happens. Hopefully we don't have any more straight out, so we can explain things.
Okay.
Okay, if, if we don't have anything of Fred, Fred, I appreciate your, your time and, and giving us the good report.
Great, good. Very good. Um, have a good rest of the meeting.
Good. Hopefully not to see you too soon, I guess, but.
Yeah, all right, take care.
All right, thanks.
All right, good night.
Thanks, Fred. Thank you.
Okay, the, the next item is, is the warrants, I believe everybody signed those, so there's nothing, no issues there. Uh, Danny, you're in highway, you want to give us a report or whatever?
Sure. Um, so as you guys have seen, just dealing with the storms as they come, we all decided to take today off since we worked most all last three days over the weekend. Um, last I heard, the new dump truck that's supposed to replace the little freightliner that I run, it, it may be in as early as this week, maybe by Friday, um, we're just going over some of the dimensions on the wings and stuff. Um, other than that, everything's been going pretty good and not, we've had some repairs the last few storms, I'm sure you guys have seen some of the, uh, bills on, uh, warrants, but nothing, nothing major, not just break, break cans and stuff that salt and tire chains destroy, but it's been pretty good. Salt's been way down on usage, I think, um, comparing to last year records, this year records, I mean, that, that's been way down for what we've used for salt, so that's, that's a good thing so far. Um, I don't have anything else really.
Hey Danny, uh, well, well back you mentioned that you had another source for gravel, is that still?
Uh, the guy never came to see me, so I, I'm going to chalk it up as it was a rumor.
Okay.
If, if, I mean, if I see him around, I definitely will ask him, but I was told that he was really interested and was going to come and see me and it, it never happened, so I haven't seen him to talk to, I do, I do know the person, um, but if I do see him, I will ask him.
Can you give him a call, Dan?
I could, yep. I do, I do know that if the Eastman Sand and Gravel, that pit is getting pretty dry. I don't know, I know there's something out there about an extension and I don't know how well that's going, but come mud season, we could be trucking gravel from either Coal River Materials or Sososmos. Um, we used a lot of our stockpile during that rain event that we had, um, you know, a few weeks ago.
Danny, I have a question for you. Uh, I understand that, um, and I don't know how this happened, maybe you can explain it, is that you got a call from the evanses and you sanded their driveway at an emergency?
Yes, I got, and, and we do this quite often and I have no problems going in to do this for anybody in town. Um, they had an emergency at, I don't even know the name, I just, I get an address, so mutual aid, I guess the fire department or the rescue calls mutual aid, mutual aid calls the state police and the state police page me and that's how I get the message, I get an address and I just, I go and show up for icy driveway that the ambulances were having problems with and I sand it and then I leave.
Well, I have no problem with it, but they want, they want to reimburse the town for the expenses.
I just say a, a thank you would be plenty, we never have had anybody reimburse us and we have, we do it at least once or twice a year on different occasions for whether it's a fire or a rescue, I, you know, I mean, it's a three hour call in and a few yards of sand. I, I feel that they're a taxpayer and that we offer that service and we have ever since I've worked there, you know, John's been, when John was there too. We did it many times, I, I don't, I wouldn't accept anything.
Well, how, how does the board feel about that? I mean, they, they're offered, do you want to just say a thank you and, or do you want to take them up on their offer? I, it's surely up to you guys.
I would say a thank you would be good.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
And, and I don't knows if legally we can accept anything.
I don't either, that's why I bring in.
I think it's written in our policy.
Yep.
Well, I appreciate it Danny, that, that you guys have done that and have done that in the past to other people who are in an emergency.
Yep. Not a problem at all.
Okay. Anything else of, of Danny? One more Danny, what, what, did they give you a date to fix the pickup?
Uh, mid-February, they thought. They say the, the problem is, is it's getting really hard and we've noticed that even on some of the parts, we've been ordering, it, it's hard to get some of the stuff now and they said that's what it'd be to hold up is ordering the parts for, for the truck.
Where is that being fixed, Danny?
Jasmine's in White River.
Uh-huh.
So it's ultimately up to the select board to pick a spot, it's, um, the insurance adjuster, I asked if he would give us recommendations and he had to get permission to do that. I just feel that, you know, they're dealing with these companies every day, they know which ones can handle, you know, what, on, on the day or, or how bad damage is and he looked into like three different companies, um, that do it and this one came back and said they could get to it and, and they were, they called me immediately, it was, they were really good about it, so I figured we'd just send it there, they're the earliest ones that could get it in.
Can I ask what happened to the truck?
On Christmas morning, I slid off the road on Middletown Road and hit an apple tree. They are figuring about sixteen thousand dollars worth of damage.
Isn't that amazing? Hit an apple tree and sixteen thousand dollars worth of damage.
Yeah.
Doesn't take a lot with these two vehicles, I mean.
It was, it was, I mean, they're, I, one of the other guys was with me and we were shocked because even the other guy said, he says, you know, we're only doing about fifteen miles an hour. It was, it was really, it wasn't ice, it was just the roads had thawed out Christmas morning with the rain and we come around a corner and it slid and I hit the brakes and boy, it took off like a rocket and, uh, we almost made it by the tree, I guess you could say, but it's, uh, it's a good reminder every time because that's on my plow route to see all the marks on that tree up there. Makes you a little gun shy, I would tell you that. First one in forty-five years, so.
So no one was hurt, Danny?
No.
Nope.
No. That's the most important thing, you can replace the truck, you can't replace the people. Anything else, Dave?
Well, the thank you for keeping the road cool.
Yep. All right, Dave, thank you.
Yep.
Um, Kim, you're next, clerk and treasurer, do you have anything further you want to talk about?
Um, probably not because I think everything is already listed under number, what do we got, seven, eight and nine? Um, no, I'm, I'm good unless you guys had a question.
Anybody have, anybody have a question of Kim? Okay, all right, good. Okay, so, um, this is on the agenda as a reminder, uh, Kim, you can, you can back, back me up because, uh, I saw you early this afternoon, but not later. Um, the deadline for town offices is, is on the twenty-sixth of January and is.
It's actually the twenty-fifth, it's the Monday, the twenty-fifth.
Okay, twenty-fifth. So, and, and to, to my knowledge, um, nobody has, uh, put anything in for the, so there are two, and, and nobody has put anything in, so if you know anybody or whatever, remind anybody if they are thinking about it, that they need to do something quickly, otherwise it'll be a write-in.
And that's for all offices, I think we have listers and we have, um, one select board member, Kathy, that's signed up already.
Right, but I think the listers and the auditors are done, right? That people have signed up?
Yep, lister, auditor and Kathy.
Yeah, right.
But that doesn't, so they can't, you know, run in the same, same spot.
Right. Okay, um, the next item is the, uh, articles for the town meeting that Bill sent out a little while ago. This is the final version, as I understand, correct, Kim?
Yes, it is.
So you need us to approve them, is that the deal?
You need to accept them within your minutes and then, um, they need to be signed.
Correct.
And then we can send, and we can post them.
If there are no, um, additions or corrections to them or, or any questions, somebody make a motion that we, uh, accept the, um, the grafted warnings, um, for March second, two thousand and twenty-one, um, we need a motion to accept it.
I'll make a motion.
All right, John, second them. Any other discussion on the, on the, uh, on the warnings, on the amendments, the articles, anything? If not, uh, we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, Kim, so they're, they're approved now, the only thing we have to do, the board has to go in and sign it, is that correct?
Yep, they're on Bill's, uh, table in his office.
Okay, all right. Okay. Um, now, I, I think the next one is, is you're interested in the mailing, whether, how we're going to vote, is that correct?
Right. Um, the legislature that governor did pass, um, you might have heard it this morning on his, um, news conference, that he did. morning on his, um, news conference, that he did, um, that we can follow the same pattern as we did for the general election, um, and we can mail out to all registered voters if we so choose to. Um, if we decide to, it needs to be approved by the board. Um, I, I had expressed, um, my feelings about it before and I do again, that I think I'd like to send them out to every one of the registered voters, which would be about five hundred and six voters. Um, and there is money in the State Department for the, um, reimbursement of the postage and I believe along with the printing of the ballots. Um, I found it, um, we had a, a lot less contact at the actual voting polls, um, which is really what I want. It was less confusing than asking for absentees. It was just a mass mailing and everybody who wants to vote, send it on in. But I need the board's approval if they have any questions or if they wanna go that route, or do they have other suggestions?
How's anybody feel?
Send the ballot out.
Pardon?
He said send ballots out.
Right, Steve?
Send the ballots out? Somebody wanna make a motion that we, uh, we follow the same procedure we did for the general election, that we send the ballots to all? And, and can we, if we can still vote in person if we so desire, is that correct?
Yep, yep, definitely. I have to be there. Um, and again, I've been posting it that you just bring your ballot with you, that you got in the mail, just like the general. If not, I'll have them available.
That'll be at the brick church, Kim?
Yes.
And, and regular times, what are the times for that? From nine to?
Seven?
Yes, nine to seven.
Nine to seven.
And will you let, so, um, who you want to come and count on the time of?
All right.
Will you let us know about, you know, scheduling to people, the, the select board and the GPs to come and count?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, the, so somebody, do we have any further discussion?
No one moved.
I thought we did.
Well, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Say again then.
I thought Stan did, but maybe I'm wrong.
No, I did.
Okay. So Stan, Stan said, oh, then I think John seconded it, correct?
Yep, right.
Okay, thank you.
Well, now that it's on the floor, okay, and we have no further discussion, so all in favor of sending out the ballots to townwide, say, yeah, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, Kim, so you can go in and make your, um, um, whatever you need to do to get that happening. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, the, the next, the, the next item is the select board vacancy. Um, I don't know if you all saw the stuff that Bill got from VLCT. Um, we have a, we have, I think we have an option, uh, we can post it, uh, because we have time, or we don't have to post it. So how does the board feel about the vacancy? So far, we have nobody interested and do you wanna, since the election is only gonna be less than six weeks away, yes, Bill?
You have to post the notice.
You have to, okay.
Yeah, you have to post it by, uh, Wednesday, that, that, that the position is vacant.
Okay.
But if you read the notice that I sent you, I gave you an option because the town meeting is so close. There's no sense in, in, uh, in anybody asking by petition for a meeting because very likely, if you did it that way, you wouldn't even be able to have a meeting within forty-two days. So, but people could petition, but anyway, there's no need for, for it. And, uh, uh, the election, it'll be on the election, uh, on March, on March second. So, um, the notice has to be approved by you. I would, um, suggest you do the alternate language in the second, which simply says that the voting will be, uh, on March second at town meeting, rather than, than the whole thing about the petition and so on.
So how's the board feel about that?
Yeah, I agree with Bill.
Yeah, I do too.
So far, we don't have anybody that's interested. I mean, they might be, but they certainly haven't, uh, talked to anybody that I know of, so, and they haven't come in to see Kim. So I, I don't see, there might be people out there, but they haven't certainly, you know, said anything. So, so, uh, if everybody's okay with just taking Bill's recommendation, then I guess we do that. Unless, and do we need a motion for that, Bill?
I would like you to make a motion to adopt that notice as presented to you, taking this, this, the option of the second paragraph.
Okay.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and one, one further thing, please?
Sure.
authorize the chair to sign that notice?
Is that okay?
Yep.
All right, so do you wanna add that to the motion then, Bill, or do you want a separate one for that?
Separate, if you would.
Okay, so the motion to the chair to sign the, uh, whatever it is that I gotta sign?
The notice.
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 No move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. If, if there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, um, any other business that we have? Yes. Everybody, this, I don't wanna make a big deal out of it, but, yeah, the Kim sent out everybody today, the electric bill, and you see the, the, the Fiasco wood, the lights added about two hundred and forty dollars to the, to the bill. And I don't know what it's gonna do for the next one. So I don't know how you wanna handle this thing and whether you just wanna absorb it, or, they did make an offer to pay for it. Um, personally, I, I think we should just forget it, but, um, but that's up to the board.
So is the thought on that, that's for, for those Christmas lights?
Yes.
Wow.
If you only, that's, Stan, you might wanna drop in and see her or talk to Kim about it. But Kim and I spent some time looking at the bill and there's no question about it. Kim was, Kim was concerned that maybe they misread the meter, but you can see that the kilowatt hours have just jumped right up.
Yeah.
And, and I, I don't know if it's because of the light bulbs or, or, um, certainly it went from an average, uh, electric bill of, um, forty-one dollars to two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, so.
Well, part of the problem too on that is that a lot of those lights were on twenty-four hours a day.
Yes, that, that's what I mean, yes.
So, I think that, that's probably correct. I mean, just based on power usage, that's probably correct. But, uh, I mean, it's just a shame that that happened. And I would hope by this time next year that that situation is, is corrected somehow.
Well, the, the, the sad part about it is that, um, you know, they, they didn't follow the protocol. And I believe that Alan had, had sent an email, uh, while he was on the board, that he, he wanted to send an apology, uh, for the way it was handled. And I didn't disagree with him. I, I wrote a, uh, an apology toward, to the, those individuals, um, and I have sent it on to Bill for his comments. And then I will, then Bill will send it on to the board and then we can decide whether you do wanna send out this, um, apology letter or just drop it. So that would be up to the board. Uh, and you could mention the electric, the electric or whatever.
Yeah, because those are two entirely different things. I mean, one is actually the electric consumption and the other one is, uh, you know, we, we screwed up or somebody screwed up type of thing. Sorry for.
Right.
Those two, two separate issues.
So when, 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 I, I find, when Bill gives me some, his, his direction and I finalize this, I'll have Bill send it to the board before it goes out, obviously. And we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting or however you wanna handle it. And if we do, we do. If we don't, we don't. But, um, they did a nice thing. I mean, it was, it looked really nice for the town and I really appreciate it. Unfortunately.
Electric bill, I mean, just based on it is consumption of power, so that really has to be paid. Uh, I don't, there's a question with that, uh, at least not in my mind.
Well, in, in one of the, in one of the emails, Stan, the board, they did offer to pay for any additional electric. So I don't know whether you wanna take it up on them or just talk it up as a, whatever. So we can deal with that once, once I get this letter, um, to the board and then you can, you can, you can get comments on it and whatever. Yeah. Any other business? If not, do we have any public comment? If not, um, the data, the date of the next meeting is February one at six PM.
Joe?
Yeah.
Joe, can I just ask, um, when were you gonna get together to go over, um, making, making comments to each article to put into the Grafton News for Wendy?
Okay, I made a suggestion to Bill and John volunteered. Uh, Bill has already started to work on some of them. I, I'm, I'm gonna, I didn't talk to John yet to see if he's available Wednesday. And we would, we would go over and, and make some comments and then pass it on to you, Kim, for your comments, and then pass the comments on to the board for their comments. And then we can, we can decide if, if everybody likes them, then we can get it over to the Grafton News.
Yeah. I, I've read Bill's comments and it's pretty well done.
Okay, I haven't read it yet, but, but, I mean.
Are they, are they short comments though?
Yeah. They're short and, and there's one that's long.
Okay.
But the rest, the rest of them are sentence or two-sentence, three-sentence long.
I was gonna say, if they're simple, they're easier to read and understand.
You can probably print it, print it off, can't you, Kim?
John and I don't have to meet with Bill. Kim, if you, you're not in tomorrow, but if you wanna take a look at them on Thursday with Bill and, and you wanna make the changes, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, it's, as long as, as long as we have the comments that mean something to the voters so that we don't get, uh, some surprise reactions, I think that's really all that counts. And then the board can approve them, uh, either verbally or by email, or we put them on the, you know. They have to go out to the, to the, to the paper soon, I think. That's the problem.
Remind me the latest.
Yeah, I think.
Well, you're, you're lacking one, but it's not ours. It's from the, tell the voters, uh, the town of Grafton approved or, or, right, the withdrawal. You know, that would probably come from Jack or somebody.
Well, we were gonna ask Hardy, I thought, if he could just give us a sentence or two as the importance of this.
Hardy, can you do that?
He's off.
No, he's on.
No, he's still on.
He's still on?
Yeah.
Uh, what's, what was the question?
Oh, can you?
The last?
Go ahead, Kim.
The article for rescinding from the union, letting, allowing West Minister to dissolve. Can you, can you give us, um, a one or two sentence to put under the article to, uh, with the Grafton News, the importance of that article?
Sure. Um, yeah, I'll talk with Jack and, uh, we will come up with something, yes.
But I think we will, we'll be discussing this at a, at an open meeting, I believe,
at some point, uh, before the town.
Right, but at the pre-town meeting, but you know, some people might not attend. So it'd be nice to have it in Grafton News so they could see it.
And I, can I, can I, can I just say, it can be more than two sentences. This is Wendy. It can be more than two sentences. It doesn't have to be two sentences. It can be a paragraph.
I know, but I'm just thinking of the public and the meaning of it all.
I know. I, I agree. I agree.
Bill, did you send this to everybody?
Or me? I, I sent it just, no, I, I was asked to, by Joe, to send it to you and, well, that you were gonna meet with me. I told Joe I would make comments before we got together. And that's, that's what I did. I just sent it to you and Joe. You can send it to everybody.
Send it to everybody, let them make the comments. Then, then John, I don't have to meet. That would be better. I don't want, let them meet to me. I didn't realize you were gonna do, do it so quick. And then I figured that, you know, then you could get it to the board on Thursday and, and Kim would be, you, Kim would be in on Thursday and then we can, you know, get it, get it, you know, finalized. But if you already had done it, John, I haven't read it. If John thinks it's okay, um, then by all means, send it to the board and, and you can meet with Kim on Thursday. Fine with me. The quicker the better. Hardy, just remember that, that, uh, there is a deadline on the paper. Wendy, what is the deadline date?
Uh, Monday would be great, actually.
Okay. So you have to get the comments to, 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 I guess, to Kim or to the board or whatever by Monday, you know, before Monday. Does that, does that work?
Works for me.
Okay. I mean, I don't know about Jack's. Sometimes he's not around, but.
I, I believe he's around.
Okay. Okay, thank you for.
Joe?
Yes?
Joe, I have a, a comment under public comment.
Go ahead.
Um, when I announced my resignation, one or two board members asked me about the village park. And my reply I want to share with the whole board is, um, I can still work on the village park under a volunteer agreement and would be willing to do that. Um, I have, as far as the timber sale goes, um, you know, the contract's there. Um, Tim's administers the sale, so that to me is pretty well taken care of. He'll, he'll touch base with, uh, the board or Bill. Um, I have materials to make the entry sign that we have talked about and the design. Um, I would be willing to make that. I have a design for the kiosk. Um, I would need to buy some pressure-treated material and when that, if, if the board, uh, wants me to continue as a volunteer, I would, um, give you a budget of what the materials would cost. And if you're okay with that, then I would get the materials and, and create the kiosk. Um, so I just wanted to share that so the whole board knew that.
Well, thank you, Alan. I would hope that you would stay, stay, uh, uh, in tune, in touch and help us with the park because you have done a lot of good work there. And I, I know that, um, Tim, um, um, he's, you know, he's, he's gonna let the board know, but if you could, if you talk to him on a regular basis and you can keep Bill, um, apprised of when they're gonna log or if he has any questions, then we can, then we can deal with that. Uh, it'd be easier.
Yep. Um, also, I should include in the offer, um, if, if it's acceptable with the board, um, my friend Rick White, retired, uh, forester and trails recreation person. Uh, the two of us would sign a, a volunteer agreement again and do the hazard trees, which this year, unless we have a big storm or something, um, should be a lot less work than last year, so.
That'd be great.
Planned.
That'd be great. Any other public comment? Okay, if not, um, just a, another reminder, the next meeting, it's at six o'clock on February first via Microsoft team. Um, have a good night, everybody. And, um, when that, when Bill sends out the, um, the little blurbs on the articles, uh, please, if you have any comment, get back to Bill, uh, or all of us, however, so we can get it to Wendy by the deadline. Because I think that's really important with, uh, what we're facing here with the Australian ballot and, and not having a real pre-town meeting and whatever, so. All righty, have a good night, everybody.